I'm gabbling us in. Good morning. At this time, I'm calling us to order and would ask that we stand, please, first for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and the Texas flags. Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Gonzalez, would you lead us in our invocation?
Let us pray. Lord God, Heavenly Father, we're here today to kind of give you thanks for everything you've given us, give you thanks for the courage and wisdom and knowledge you have given this Commissioners' Court, and we ask you to pray for all those people that are here today, that their will be heard also. Lord, we give you thanks for healing those that are sick, and pray for those that got sick ones in the hospital, at home. Lord, and we give you thanks for every day that you have blessed us. We're blessed today to be here, and I ask you again in your name, Lord. Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Good morning, Madam Clerk. I do certify that a quorum is present. I also note for the record that Commissioner John Modas is not present today. As you know, we are here at the third floor of the Neoces County Courthouse, and the time is 9:07 a.m. At this time, Commissioners, I'd ask that I receive a motion for the approval of the minutes that were held on May 8th and also on May 22nd, 2019. Has everyone had a chance to review, and do I have a motion?
No move.
Do I have a second on the motion to approve both sets of minutes, May 8th and May 22nd? Can I take them as one motion? I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Moving on, letter E is the adopting of resolutions, proclamations, and/or orders. At this time, Commissioners, I do have a proclamation for the Mosaic Project of South Texas Fourth Annual Pride Week, which is held June 3rd through June 9th, 2019, and I would ask, Tyner, do you have a copy of that proclamation?
I do.
Okay, if you would hold.
You have one in your name, Judge, in your book.
Oh, in my, right here in front. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I have a request that I'd like to honor. Commissioner Vaughn?
Thank you. I'd like to read a statement. "The First Amendment to the United States Constitution prevents the government from making laws which respect an establishment of religion, prohibit the free exercise of religion, or abridge the freedom of speech, freedom of the press, the right to peaceably assemble, or the right to petition the government for redress of grievances. It was adopted on December the 15th, 1791, as one of the ten amendments that constitutes the Bill of Rights. I have great respect for our United States Constitution and the founding fathers who wrote in the protection of your free speech. Isn't it great that we have free will to make choices based on our own belief systems? God is great, God is good, and I am proud to share with everyone my beliefs while respecting your free will and your free speech." So today, the judge has a right to present a proclamation to your organization, so appreciate my right that in my belief system, I will not support this proclamation. Although the commission's signatures are not required on this proclamation, it states Commissioners' Court, of which I am a part of this court. I don't believe government should be involved in this. I want it in the record that I do not support this proclamation or agree with the statements in it. Thank you."
Thank you, Commissioner Vaughn. At this time, the court recognizes members of Mosaic Project and also members of Equality Texas in the audience, and I'd ask them to join me as I come forward to present you with this proclamation, if you so desire. As you know, I will be with you all this weekend, and so I will actually bring the proclamation. Or is there a second copy? I can present this with you. It's probably safer in your hands, anyway. I will give you this shortly. Typically, what we do is I announce that this is a county judge proclamation for the Mosaic Project of South Texas Fourth Annual Pride Week from June 3rd through June 9th, 2019, and we'll read the whereas and therefore's. "Now therefore, by the powers vested in me as county judge, I hereby proclaim June 3rd through June 9th, 2019, as Pride Week in Neoces County, Texas, and encourage citizens in Neoces County to join me in celebrating dignity, strength, passion, dedication, and commitment of the LGBTQIA+ community in the Coastal Bend. Signed this day, 5th of June, 2019, Barbara Canales, Neoces County Judge." And I present, is it all right, Tom? Okay, I'll present it to you, Bill, and also ask that you bring it on Saturday, when I actually have the opportunity to read it, to be a time.
Don't want a picture?
We also have one resolution, I believe, for presentation, Commissioners, and that is the celebration of the Emancipation Proclamation for Juneteenth, 2019, in Neoces County, and I'd ask Dr. Scott to come forward as Tyner reads this resolution for consideration.
Whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. Whereas, the day the last slaves in America were freed was said to be June 19th, 1865, when General Gordon Granger rode into Galveston, Texas, and issued General Order Number Three, two and a half years after President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation. Whereas, Juneteenth serves as a reminder of the sacrifices our ancestors made for freedom, and an opportunity to educate our children on the history of our nation and its people. Whereas, 2019 marks the 154th year anniversary of Juneteenth, and because the 154th year anniversary is a significant milestone in American history, with Juneteenth serving symbolically and in reality as a reference point from which to appreciate the progress and contributions made by African-Americans to this society. Now therefore, be it resolved by the New Acis County Commissioners' Court, that the court hereby encourages all citizens to attend the June 10th through June 19th, 2019 festivities of the 10 Days of Celebration of the Emancipation Proclamation, in honor of the 2019 Juneteenth celebration in New Acis County, Texas.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Would you like to make some comments?
I would like to say that this represents for the whole United States a very special time. As you heard, this proclamation was signed into national status of being the national law here in Texas, in Galveston, and we all, all races, creeds, personalities, celebrate both sides of the issue of freeing these Americans, that we all try and contribute, especially here in Neoces County, to the welfare and well-being of this county. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you so much. At this time, I will take a motion for this resolution, and a second, please. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? The only thing I would add is that, Dr. Scott, do you have any announcements to make on celebrations? Or we can also follow up with the county on those if we don't have the details. I just wanted to see if there were.
I would kind of highlight very rapidly, but there are 10 days, and I will bring upstairs flyers, but the main banquet, each year, we choose a group of persons who work in this country to be honored, and this year, 2019, is pastors. So all of the local pastors here are being honored, and our national honoree is Reverend Dr. Fred Gray from Tuskegee, Alabama, who was both the lawyer and the pastor to the Dr. Martin Luther King and his group and the whole civil rights movement. He will be here for three days, with the banquet being on the 17th at Emerald Beach Hotel. And the major thing we like in this area, this county, we have each year, for now the 10th year, an emancipation poster contest. We're all children in this whole area, no charge for anything, from grades kindergarten through 12th, are invited to come to Solomon Coles School, and for 45 minutes, sit alone, no parent or anybody can sit with them, and draw a poster of what emancipation and freedom and all means to them. And we have encouraged people throughout the city to talk with their children about this and to use focal points. And I will leave upfront a calendar from the 9th through the 19th, and free barbecue is always given on the 19th over at Solomon Coles from 5:30 until it runs out. Thank you.
Thank you for that announcement. Is there any further discussion? In that case, all those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Thank you again, Dr. Scott. Commissioners, we have board appointments at this time, Citizens Advisory Board on Health and Welfare, and I believe it is two reappointments. Is that correct, Tyner?
That's correct. Yeah, you had five terms expiring, and you had two express interests, Belinda Flores and Dr. Tony Diaz.
Yes, and both of those, just Commissioners, are reappointments.
That's correct.
And I'd just like to point out that I know we've done a workshop recently on our boards and commissions, and I think we're making some progress, but it does hurt a little bit for me to see these vacancies in such an important board, and I know that I would welcome your recommendations, Commissioners, and please, let's urge our citizens to apply online for these really important boards and commissions. The vacancies are still there, and I know that they really need to be filled in order to truly represent and reflect our community. So at this time, I'll take a motion to approve Belinda Flores and Dr. Tony Diaz as reappointments to this commission. I'm sorry, to this advisory board.
Aye.
And a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Same sign. And Tyner, we'll let both of them know that they've been reappointed.
Yes.
Okay. We will now receive a workshop to discuss the direction of technology support and how IT department is applying this to Neoces County, and to do that, we have none other than the Director Lance Murphy. Welcome.
Morning.
Good morning.
I pulled up the presentation here. All right, let me know when y'all can see that. Wouldn't want you to miss out on those stunning graphics.
Not quite yet, almost. Looks like we're going dark now. I'm almost up. I'm still dark. There we go. We're ready now. Thank you.
Okeydoke. So I just wanted to take y'all through kind of how support in IT is changing. It's become apparent that there's a little disconnect between your traditional IT support that we had in the past, when you had a printer breakdown or something like that, compared to what IT has to do now. So I tried to kind of break it down and not get too geeky on y'all, so I'm taking off my propeller hat here, and let me know if I get too deep. First, let's just talk about how it doesn't look the same as what it did before. An example is the copier. So I'm sure everybody at some point had that new copier that had all the new features on it, and all you wanted to do was hit the green button and make a copy, and it became kind of ridiculously complicated because you had to select all the different settings. And the truth is that there was somebody using all those settings, but the implementation of that technology, there was a lack in training, and maybe even just a lack in usefulness as far as what certain individuals needed. So that's where technology can be introduced in a bad way. There's ways to introduce it better. There's training. Sometimes people avoid the training because they don't have time, but in the end, the person who suffered was the person who was just trying to do something simple. Secondly, was like if it breaks. Traditionally, you know, if it didn't work like you expected it to, then it might, you might have the wrong paper in it. We started adding more and more features to these technology devices, and so then you had the IT guy coming in and kind of pushing you aside to help fix the problem, and that's been kind of the traditional view of how support in IT happens, is the guy who knows all the little nuances of that piece of equipment comes in and gets your world back, or going back the way you thought it was supposed to. So I'm going to walk you through a typical, any kind of IT help process, so that you can see the difference between coming in blindly, taking care of whatever that device's intended purpose was, without you having to explain necessarily what you did, compared to how the help process works now. Right now, we have to come in and understand the problem. First, we got to know if it is a reoccurring problem. A lot of times, we have to actually observe the problem happening, and that's pretty typical for the copier example there. But then comes the little, the anomaly here, is we have to learn what the normal operation is. Technology has introduced itself into everybody's business process. So where people used to move a piece of paper from one spot to another, they are now initiating workflows inside specialized software. If the IT person doesn't understand your regular business process, then they can't help you identify why what you're seeing is a problem all the time. So they have to kind of know what you're doing and what the normal operation is. That's why that's yellow, because we're going to keep hitting that topic over and over again. Then we have to identify any known changes and differences. We can't do anything unless we know that nothing specific has changed, and then that's where the magic happens. That's the attempt at a solution. I say attempt, because a lot of times, we fix something and then wait to see if it actually worked, and if it occurs again, then we kind of repeat those last steps as necessary. I guess you could say the better the IT person, the less you have to repeat. But next would be a technology solution request. So just like we get a help request when something's broke, we also get requests for improving and making things more efficient using technology. So once again, we kind of have to understand the problem for the request, or what is trying to be addressed. It may not be a problem specifically. And then there's that yellow highlighted line again. We've got to learn kind of your current, your normal operation. We have to dive in a lot deeper into the things that y'all do in order to understand the implications of the technology. Otherwise, we're going to bring the copier in, and it's going to have all these features in it that just get in the way. So, using the copier as a reference there. Then, of course, we have to determine where that technology can deliver and where it can't. A lot of times, the problem is not fixed with just another button on the screen. It's fixed with a developed workflow using that software, or even some customization. Then we got to determine the changes required for that technology. When we bring the technology in, it's going to impact sometimes multiple departments, the way we share things, and that kind of, the last items just kind of all merge together into one big thing. There's new business processes to develop. There's an implementation. We have to figure out how to implement it. Once we decide we like it and it looks great, if we just come in and turn it on one day, that never works well. So then we have to develop that strategy, and then, of course, implement and adjust and repeat. When you go live with something the first time, the bigger it is, the more bugs are going to be in it, and we work all that out. So that's just your typical technology request.
Lance, excuse me.
Yeah, stop me anytime.
I received a note that I need to take just a short pause.
Oh, sure.
But this is a good point, because now we've identified, I'm going to kind of break up your presentation in kind of how we have problems and how we've identified problems, at least in the past, and now we're going to start talking about, hey, what is really IT? I mean, how does it impact that very problem that you've identified? And if you would allow me just a short pause, we have an elected official with us that needs to return back to, as they say, his home base, and would you defer, would you yield just for a moment?
Consider it paused.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to go a little bit out of order and ask for the public comment slate, just for the limited purpose of allowing Councilman Greg Smith to come forward. But go ahead and bring it to me, just so I can verify. Thank you, and I would ask all the other public comments to please yield to the councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Canales, and I appreciate your working with it. But I came here today on May 24th. We had the ribbon cutting for Parker Pool. And Parker Park in Flower Bluff, it consists of many elements. There's a senior center at the Lyerly. It's got a pavilion, tennis courts, walking track, playgrounds, and it's got a pool, a pool that's been used by generations of Flower Bluffians. And this pool was in desperate need of repair. It's been operated since 2015 by the Coastal Bend Aquatics. The county came in, leadership of Commissioner Chesney, and repaired that pool. And so on the 24th, we opened it up that day. We had 98 kids learning to swim or practicing their swimming practice with it, and thank you so very much for that. And I would also like, as a City of Corpus Christi, to compliment Edward and the crew, what a great job that they did doing, bringing that pool up to standards efficiently at a low cost. It is an example, I think, for all public entities to follow. So you all have a great team. Thank you very much to your contribution to Flower Bluff and our greater community. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Lance, forgive me, and now we're going to return to, tell us about how IT is really developed and changed, if you will, almost morphed.
Unpause here.
Yeah.
So IT is no longer just a background department. It requires the knowledge of how each department operates internally, how each department operates or interacts with other departments. Recent ones that we've been addressing, specifically how departments are regulated, the DPS, CGS, as we commonly refer to it, OCA reporting, there's federal, there's HIPAA stuff, there's a mile-long list of things that we have to report to. And if your data is in a system that you need to get that report out of, then usually we somehow become involved in it. And of course, then you have security, you got data security, where you got sharing and protecting things appropriately. Lock it up too tight, nobody can see it, and then let it out too much, and everybody can see it. That's a problem, too. Data access, website, mobile devices, reporting, again, would be considered kind of on the access side in some situations. And then, of course, cost benefits, cost versus savings. These are all things that IT ends up kind of providing the estimates and answers to in advance of putting something in place, especially with the dollar figures associated with a lot of these technology solutions. So this next slide, I did a lot of reaching out, including to some of our internal resources we use. We have a product called Infotech. It's kind of like the Westlaw for IT, and they had a great slide here that I just kind of, and I had permission to steal. It's got a source. So for the first time ever, making a PowerPoint since like college, I had a bibliography in this one, so that's the reason for it. Anyway, the traditional IT has been separate. This is a slide, and it's sourced, I guess the important thing is that this slide was sourced in 2004. So back in 2004, the business side of things recognized that IT was already morphing, and it's no longer an option. It's part of the success circle. So it's got the two circles coming together there. They used to be their own silos business, and then you had kind of IT in the background running things. But the way businesses have been succeeding is by bringing those two more intimately together, so that the decisions are not just the business side saying, we need something, and then IT going out and getting it. IT actually has to work with the team in order to implement correctly. So a sure way to fail. If we just focus on putting out fires and just running around, fixing the individual problems, and never taking a bigger look at what is going on and why is it happening repeatedly, then that will end in failure. Sometimes it takes a while, and the more bodies you throw to fixing the fires, you can delay the failure process or the awareness of that failure, but it will eventually lead that way. And/or we've also got, if we give you exactly what is asked for, without connecting the dots between what you're trying to accomplish, if we just, and I don't mean that in an offensive way, it's a, the expert knowledge of what IT pieces fit together and which puzzle pieces go together are not commonly known between non-IT. So a lot of times, people will come in with an idea, because they've seen something successful on the business side of things, or they've seen something successful in the personal technology worlds. But if we just put it in place without evaluating the impact to the government needs, specifically here, which are even more regulated than business and everything else, then that will also eventually end in failure. This next slide, I've got a disclaimer on it, because I am going to use the term revenue very loosely and probably incorrectly. So I apologize, but I am IT, not financial, so. IT generating revenue and savings. This is a real thing. The biggest one that we have an example of was our involvement in pushing online jury along. Now, if you had IT all by themselves, this would have never happened. I'm not saying that IT can exclusively deliver any of these things, like I said, or like I showed in that slide, a couple of slides ago. It's the relationship between the business side of things and IT. But there have so far been over $400,000 in savings due to online paneling and everything accomplished in the jury process, and IT was part of the panel that was put together to get that operating. E-commerce in general, just online payments, the ability for people to pay online generates additional revenue where people would not have in the past. If you make things convenient, then people will, well, not all people, but some will come to the table that they weren't coming before. Specifically with the Justice of the Peace Offices, we had collections where we were required, not required, we introduced new business processes using Odyssey and the reporting in there to create, it's still a manual process, but a developed and working process where they can deliver things to Linebarger for collections. So things that they weren't able to collect on before, they are now, of course, partner. The in-between steps to make that happen was a heavy part to do with IT's integration with those departments working one-on-one with them to get the data organized and then make sure that the reporting was correct to submit. Of course, a website, in general, if you have a website, and you know, we try to keep the design improving, but when you have a website that lists things, everything that somebody can get off that website, and the easier it is for them to find that, is one less phone call that they make to any of the offices trying to figure out where things are. So the more stuff we put there, the less phone calls, and the less phone calls, the more time to do all the other things that we at the county are overloaded with to do. And if you don't have to hire another, or add another position because you're able to automate that delivery of information, then that is kind of unseen savings that happens. with IT in the background. Other efficiencies specific to what has happened at the records warehouse, a more intimate relationship between IT and the business processes there have led to the savings that I brought, just I believe the previous commissioners' court, where we can effectively reduce the vacant positions and restructure a little to continue to improve that. Of course, Record Services was directly under the Information Technology Department, so we had a little bit more room to gallop there. And that just kind of shows what happens when you put them together. Reporting in general, we kind of briefly covered that before, but not on the fiscal end of that. As we found out a few years ago, there's a lot of grant money tied to reporting correctly to DPS. And IT has been a heavy part in producing the reports that then facilitate the closing out of all those charges. Like I said, I'm going to repeat it, IT by themselves, we just cost. But when you put it together with the business side, the savings are then realized. And a lot of times, the savings and even the revenue generated is not, is kind of left as just part of the business growing and not realized to the actual connection to IT. Some other things that are coming up, you know, we have online court documents. We've been working on that a while. Lot of work going in with Tyler Technologies to make that happen.
Can you just remind us on the date, you know, just some expectations on timeline on that? I know that's an inquiry we get at our office quite often with the lawyers.
The online court document specifically has been-
I know it's-
-on completion for the past three months. I keep expecting it to be any week now.
Oh, it's imminent.
It's imminent.
Good, thank you.
But yeah, a specific date, I would not, my last name's Murphy, and I don't want to-
I think imminent's good.
E-intake, we're working with the District Attorney's Office for improving their ability to communicate with CCPD and such. Both IT departments have been working vigilantly in the background to attempt to replace the process that they were doing, which was currently printing out a bunch of paper, handing it off, and then somebody scanning a bunch of paper back in. So something simple, but when you put it in place, lots of savings. And social media and website connectivity in general with that social media platform. We, of course, I've visited with a few people on some of the delays that we had there with trying to make sure we didn't create the accounts incorrectly and put ourselves liable later. We finally got in touch with a Facebook contact, and we have begun reviewing, began, began reviewing the information that they've given us to try to set a standard for how to do that. And they also meet records retention policies and everything else. So those are just a short list of kind of what's to come. There's a whole bunch more, but I don't want to waste too much time here. Some specific examples to Nuasis County on priorities. I want to reemphasize that this is a very, very short list. The ADA, what do you call it? Requirement, that'll work. ADA requirements here by our settlement agreement. We've been finding new ways to automate the monitoring process because a website doesn't, well, a good website doesn't just sit there, it changes. And as things change, we have to continue to maintain the compliance. And then working with existing software vendors to determine their accessibility goals. And we continue to reach out to them and check where they're at and push that forward. And then, of course, vetting all the new vendors. We've actually developed a whole software questionnaire list that we pretty much send out to everybody now, because we found that we would get halfway through a, some sort of procurement process and find out that they couldn't meet the DOJ standards that we are held to. CGIS, I briefly mentioned that earlier a couple of times, so I won't go into too much detail, but lots of stuff tied with that. Jail population, we've been working in the jail population meeting for a while and creating new reports that are all in draft form, because, you know, all we can do is suggest visualizations. At the end of the day, the departments and offices still need to validate that data, make sure that it's correct. But visualizing it in different ways will allow you to see trends that you didn't see before when it was just numbers on a paper. And then finding the right IT solutions in various departments. We've been making an active attempt to kind of be present at the software demonstrations in various departments. We've worked with social services, district attorney, district clerk, purchasing, auditors, anybody who I find out has some software that they would like. We try to get in early with those demonstrations. And even earlier now that we have the software questionnaire to prevent maybe wasted time on demonstrations that don't, that will not meet our standards. Like I said, short list, but in general, what does IT need to do to keep us from failing, to push that success and bring those two departments together? Well, in general, the knowledge that IT has, the more knowledge we have on both the tech side of things and the specifics of the department, the better decisions we can help all departments and offices make. So a lot of times, that, I guess, this is kind of happening in the industry in general. We see a lot more specialized medical practices where they're specialized to individual things. And that's no different from what we're seeing in the software world and everything that's going on. The software as a service concept that we commonly refer to as SaaS is the ability to let the company that is the pro at those functions that we are looking at have total control of the hardware that it takes, the updating process of all that hardware, and of course, the individual customizations in the product. So some of the delays that we've had on online documents are a result of Tyler being the specialist on the device, not us anymore. But when Tyler develops a solution, they have to make sure that it meets any standards that are out there, new reporting standards that are, that come out, they have to make adjustments to. If IT, if you try to find IT people who can customize to that level, we can't afford them. We've attempted in the past, and the mainframe that we used to have was the last of the customization efforts done locally onsite. Since then, we have been pushing into these software as a service agreements because they have a whole business that's a successful business based on the design of their product. And when you're trying to design a product internally with minimal staff and what you could consider minimal knowledge when it comes to the specifics of how the coding of a financial system works or other things, you just can't have enough knowledge in a small IT staff to pull all of that off. So software as a service is a way for us to reach out to the professionals and then hold them accountable for that information. And every new software as a service contract, we make sure that we can get our data back, the data that is ours. And once you kind of enter that world, the data exchange between platforms becomes more manageable. The conversion that we did between our mainframe, criminal and civil data and everything into Tyler was pretty brutal because it was not designed by other like companies. It was very specific to us, and a lot of the rules that other companies follow on how to do things in the accounting world and the case management world change are different, and those do not communicate well. So when we enter the software as a service world, we also enter a more standardized world where we have a little more freedom to move between without as much cost to do so. Doesn't mean you don't have to convert anything, but it means that it will be easier. In general, support and maintenance on all of the hardware, you know, we don't hire people who can get, can solder parts back together in the various network equipment that is scattered throughout the county. We have a contract with the provider of that equipment to do those kind of detailed fixes. So we have expertise, but where to draw the line between the knowledge required to support all of this and then when you hand it off to somebody else. So those first two categories that I've got in there, I kind of highlighted them for you, because those are the way that we, the things that are changing here, where we're redrawing that line more appropriately, handing off things to the specialists when that's required. And then, but keeping the knowledge together when it's required on this side. Because no matter how specialized these IT operations are, they are not here to see how we use their product and how we have to communicate between departments. And every county has a different structure, operates somewhat uniquely enough that you need that knowledge in your IT staff localized to bring all those technologies together.
So Lance, we don't have anybody on staff then that really is a, what I would call a hardware fixer? In other words, nobody has that specialized skill set that they are somebody who actually repairs the equipment here onsite?
That's true. We have people who can bring different parts in and swap parts.
Troubleshooter, yeah.
But, and they can, they troubleshoot the operation of the hardware. But if the hardware has failed itself and requires actual repair, that has to be sent off. And that's the reason we have those service contracts, so that we don't have to pay for all, when it's in warranty. We watch those warranties, and that's the renewals that we bring through here.
Okay.
So kind of wrapping up, we have, we've recently become part of the Texas Association of Government IT Managers. It's a conference that they have once a year. There's also a local group that's kind of reforming because it recently lost its leader. But that's been one of the most valuable resources for what other counties are doing specifically, counties and municipalities, both, but government in general. And we have a lot of connections to people there that we can reach out to. Local government IT leaders through the tag ITM, which is that one I just talked about, and just making connections in general with local city, what am I, IT directors and all that stuff. InfoTech, I mentioned to you all earlier, that's our Westlaw for generalized information, and they also give us the ability to reach out to people. And then every IT person's best friend is YouTube and Google, because we can Google our way through a lot of things. But the more complicated things, you know, Google will tell you exactly what you're searching for, and if you don't know what to search for, then you will be lost. We're recent, recently, we've begun looking at the concept of self-audits. You know, when we put things into place, it sounds like a great idea, but I would really like third parties to verify that it's a good idea. One of the ones specific that we've just recently done was telecom reviews. You know, in general, the telecommunications world is constantly changing in price and packages, and it's a, it can be a burden to try to keep track of each specific, there's hundreds of these bills that come in. And so there's companies out there that will review that, and y'all are going to be seeing, we're working with one of them right now to try to present a new way to kind of audit ourself. And we want to do that on security review and design reviews in general. So I don't want you all to just accept what we put on the table because it's what we say is good. I want you to have verification that it is meeting the needs and that it's following standardizations across. That's the reason for this knowledge side of the column here, is to try to make sure that we're making the right decisions and can verify that those are the right decisions. So I have homework for y'all. There's a couple links in there, and there are just a couple of other websites. They're short reads and just more recent than the 2004, just kind of briefly going over this changing role of IT. It kind of summarizes some of the things that I went through, goes into a few more details that may get a little geeky, so if it gets too geeky, put it down. But anyway, that's pretty much the generalized changing of IT that's happening and kind of the way we're trying to address that. And of course, if y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. And of course, maybe what we should do, commissioners, is develop our slide and say what we need from IT. And that's going to be, you know, a working document. But I know the one thing that I hear a lot as I come into the courthouse and leave the courthouse every day is, you know, how much a Wi-Fi, you know, accessible spot would be helpful downstairs. I know people come and want to share presentations with each other, and, you know, if you have a personal hotspot, that's great. But it seems in a public building in 2019, that's something that, you know, we want to work towards, and having IT help us understand what that, what it would take resource-wise to actually get that done would be a good goal for us to have together. And in addition, I just wanted to mention, because you mentioned it, is that with regards to the telecom, when you ask for things, you've got to pay for them. And one of the ways that might be a great funding source for us to improve our IT resources is just the telecom audit. The telecom audit Lance mentioned, you might see it be presented to you as quickly as we can get the information, but there are third-party companies that come in at no charge and hopefully can find real savings, because quite frankly, data plans are changing all the time. Hard lines are changing to different types of lines. And so we're just evolving, but there's hundreds of county assets to manage. And so the way it typically works is they take a percentage of the savings they find. After a certain amount of time, it's all your savings. But these are things that we really, these are tools that we need to utilize, and I'm glad to see that they also exist in the world of design and security. So I think that in an upcoming agenda, you'll see that, that we will bring to you some presentations from companies that are cutting edge on that. It's kind of strange that they would just come in for free, but that indicates how much savings there are, right? If they're willing to come into your shop for six months to nine months and keep looking and keep digging, it's because there's something to find. So Lance, will you share with the commissioners and possibly introduce Bridget, who's here with us today, our evolving IT department? And I think that'll be a nice way to bring her forward.
Sure. Yeah, we've had a lot of changes happening recently.
Yes, we have.
Bridget Tyler here is-
Hello.
Hi, Bridget, welcome.
She's going to be filling in while I'm away for a little bit. But anyway, I'll let her kind of fill you in on how she's been moving her way through IT pretty impressively, actually.
Absolutely, and welcome. And we've had the opportunity to visit, but I thought this would be a nice way for everyone to see your face and be able to know that you're going to be at the helm.
Yes, I started as a system analyst. Well, I originally came into the tax office as an IT person there. And then I moved my way into the IT department as a system analyst. And then from there, I moved up to the manager of application services. And it's been challenges. And then, of course, now with this opportunity that's come, I won't say that I'm not nervous about it, but I'm definitely ready for the challenge. And I'm here for y'all, for anything that y'all need, and I'll try my best. If I can't find the solution right away, I'll make sure and get you an answer, though.
Thank you. And likewise, we're here for you and to give you the support that you need as well. So we look, I look forward to working with you. And commissioners, I've had the opportunity to visit with Bridget at length and with Lance, and we've also had other personnel changes. So it's a great opportunity to really take this particular document that Lance has presented and to continue to educate us on how we can be more modern. We've done some things that are wonderful, but it looks like we have some really good goals. So we look forward to working with you, Bridget.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Lance or comments to Bridget here?
Welcome, Bridget.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Lance, very much. We appreciate it. And I do think revenue is an appropriate word. It may not be appropriate in the Gatsby, you know, form, but it certainly, particularly for the online jury system, I mean, I suspect that we can even save more dollars if we get more innovative.
I did Google it.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, we are now out of workshop and into public comment, and I noticed that we have Margaret Fratella. Will you join us at the podium? And welcome, Margaret.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners. First of all, I want to try to bring up the thanks from the whole Corpus Christi for the wonderful speech that you gave to the state of the county. It was amazing. First time on this happening, that we are happy and looking forward. And your message was, we can. Therefore, today, I'm here to- Therefore, today, I'm here to remind you that two weeks ago, two weeks, I think, I was here to talk about the collections. And I want to give you a little bit of background. Why did I start that? Because I was taking mediation classes to the dispute resolution center. And the question was, why do we need so many mediators? And in that time, it was Commissioner McHomp. And he was putting the question, why do you have to spend so much money for the appointed attorneys? Court attorneys? And one of the judges that was a liaison between the judiciary and auditor, he put a question, well, why didn't you collect money from, you know, collection for fees, for fines? So in this way, we can have money to, you know, to pay our court-appointed attorneys. And in that time, it was like, probably like eight, 10 years, was $6 million that was. And so I just want to give you just a little hint to see where we were standing in that time. Probably is doubling right now, I don't know. What happened is that I want to also suggest, like, we have a roundup with the police department for the warrants. Probably the sheriff can do that. So we were talking, like, with a lot of groups in the community. And they said, I don't think that the sheriff has enough people to do that. And I said, if somebody can do something, it's our judge, because she can get the funds and, and get it done. We can. So anyway, I just heard today that we can't do the collection. So I know that you can, and it'll be like a good revenue for the county. That's in this subject. I went another subject to, just very short, because I don't know how long I have. And for about 40 years, I'm going to, I went to city council and tell them about the streets in Corpus Christi. 60% from the streets, they have no names, they have no numbers, and we have an ordinance there. And they said that they don't have enough people to do that, which is very tragic for us. Because like 40% from people here, they make their living on deliveries, including me. So now I was, I was driving through some county roads. So I would kindly appreciate if you look into that, because they have no names, county roads, because after the hurricane really was bad. And even before, they have no numbers. I mean, it's very, you know, hard to, for the first responders to find these places. So if you look into that, I should appreciate. And I know with the, with the speed and we can't do it. I know that the judge will get into that right away, and the commissioners, I really appreciate if you look into that. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Gonzalez?
I want to touch on about four things here, Judge.
Sure, go ahead.
Just as far as the county road signs, I don't know, I haven't really seen any in my precinct, but if they are, and somebody knows they don't have any, I wish you'd call me. And I'll make sure I follow up on it. I'm sure every commissioner here feels the same way. You know, because we want to make sure all the county roads are named and numbered, whatever. Because if not, MetroCom will be lost, and so will the sheriff department when they're out there trying to serve somebody. You know, but in my precinct, I know that if you let me know, I'll get it done.
I will. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. The other one, briefly, I just want to touch on the proclamations, Judge. I think that as far as the First Amendment, freedom of speech, and, you know, and I wish that would have been brought before the commission and scored, like normally all the other ones do. And if it didn't pass, and I, I know you would have done it anyway in your name. And I don't, I don't agree with a lot of things that the community does either. And, but I'm, I'm not here to judge anybody. You know, I was elected as a county commissioner to serve Neoces County and everybody in this county. And I think I need to serve everybody just the same way I serve anybody else with respect. And it's not me to say what they can do and can't do. So I just want to, I just want to know that people know that I don't agree with everything out there that this committee does. But I, I know that a lot of those people in that community run this city. You know, run a lot of, a lot of departments in this city, a lot of departments in the county, a lot of, you know, and, and they're just as anybody else. I mean, they're, I mean, they pay taxes, and we should treat them the same way. Proclamation is only a piece of paper, and doesn't mean that we're, we're jumping ship or anything else. So I just want them to know, or, you know, that I, I was elected to, and I gave an oath that I would serve everybody equally and with fair and with respect. So that's, that is my, my feeling about the proclamation. I'm glad you did it on your own, and I support you for that. The other one is the Cindy Park, number two. And I want to just thank Commissioner Vaughn for that, because I know she was out. And I would thank you, Commissioner, for, for allowing us to continue on that project. You know, and if you'd have been there, you really would appreciate. There were people out there, they were, had been waiting for water for 40 years. For 40 years, been waiting for water. You know, it took us 10 years to give them water. But you know, I was disappointed that the fact that the color times was not even there. You know, they, they covered, if it had been a flood, I guarantee you that would have been there. It would have been on the front page. But the color time was not there, and I'm really disappointed. And when something like this happens, you know, there's not, there's no coverage. A couple of the medias were there, and I thank them for being there. But you know, I'm really disappointed in the color times. Because, you know, we've been in the front page before when there's floods in Sonila, number one and two. They're all out there, even the color times. So I just want to say Cindy Park has drinking water. They're, they're very happy. They've got good, fresh coffee now. And, and they send, send their thanks in regards to you, Commissioner, also for being part of it. Thank you very much. The last one that I have here is also a good note. And I'd like to have Mr. Michael Robinson. You can bring your family, too. I was going to say Mike, Michael, I don't know, I guess either one, right? You answered either one, right?
Yeah, just don't call me late for dinner. Yes, Michael Robinson, this is my wife, Caroline Robinson.
And I won't make, I won't make dinner for you, I'll let your wife do it.
Also, I have, I have a few children. Go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to say that we, the board of purchasing department board, consists of three district judges, the judge and myself, had interviews and we, for the purchasing department director, Elsa is gone. So we elected, selected Mike as a new director for purchasing. So thank you. Welcome aboard. And now you can say a little bit about yourself.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Judge. Thanks also to Judge Mederi, Judge Klein, Judge Hesse for selecting me for this post. I would not be here without the work of other purchasing agents who came before me. Most notably for myself is Elsa Sines, who was my purchasing agent and my boss for 11 years. And I look forward to taking the purchasing department forward even further with the good works that were already laid in place. And being someone who has an open door. If there's anything that any of the commissioners need, or anyone in the departments, everybody knows, you've probably seen me around pulling a cart or just delivering office supplies, or even occasionally helping Romeo deliver a squad cart out to the annex. Those things will continue. And I look forward to helping you achieve the dreams that you want to have. I know that when each of you decided to run for office, you wanted to make a difference in the community. And I want to be the person that's really quiet on the side, but helping you to find options to get those goals accomplished. And so when I send a notification email to you because I found something that looks interesting, I will send it because I see it, but it's the start of a conversation. And so what I want to do is engage in that conversation, come to a good solution so that the county can move forward. And I wouldn't be here without the support that I have at home. And this is my wife, Caroline Robinson. She has, I met her when we went to school in Texas Tech many years ago. And she's stuck with me through thick and thin. And she's also a graduate of Texas A&amp;M University here in Corpus Christi as a master of education. So she's even more educated than I am. And so my children, I have four, they're not able to be here today. My oldest son is in College Station. He's married. He just graduated from Texas A&amp;M last summer. I have a son who, and a daughter who are at summer camp. We just dropped them off this weekend. And then my daughter has, who is at Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, she's going to summer school today. She's working three jobs. And we're really proud of them. And so they're here with me.
Oh, that's great.
Also want to thank the staff in purchasing. They've been very supportive as we've gone through this transition. And if it wasn't for them doing the daily tasks every day and keeping me in line when I go astray, it would be very difficult. Also want to thank Dale and Lourdes, who've been mentors to me in each of their respective areas. And also Belinda in, in their office. And just, just everyone. I'm, I'm so excited about the future. I had told the committee when I interviewed for the job, they asked me if I had any ideas about what I wanted to do going forward. I said I got about 15. I said, but I was only going to share a couple with them at that time. So we're working with the auditor's office on paperless invoicing. We want to start a purchasing users group so that we can get education out to the departments on the mystery that is purchasing. And, and make it so it's not an unknown and, and help us get things done quicker. So thanks again for this wonderful opportunity. Look forward to serving.
Thank you, Michael. And I echo Commissioner Gonzalez's congratulations. And I will tell you, sitting on that committee, we had some excellent applicants. But there was no doubt in our mind that you rose to the top. And I was the one that asked that question, and I had to say, okay, stop after number three. But the truth is, and I told you then, and I'll say it again, I can't wait to hear and see all 15. Because I know they're all going to be either an ability to help be more efficient in this county, more streamlined, and most likely, you know, saving a lot of time and money. But the thing that makes you very, very special is your willingness to do and be so hands-on, which allows all of us to learn a little bit more about the involvement of purchasing with each of our offices. And you're just a great and inspirational person to lead. And I cannot wait to implement some of these goals. So anyway, I think it's a wonderful day in Neoces County. I do want to recognize Elsa Sines for her 25-plus years of service. And commissioners, I would say we haven't done enough there yet. And I want you to know that she was incredibly humble, and we certainly asked, and she didn't really want a lot of fanfare. But it's a judge's prerogative and duty on behalf of the county to say thank you to her for...
She has a watch coming.
She does have a watch. So can we make that happen, Tyner? We've got to do something special for, for Elsa. So, thank you.
You've got big shoes to fill, but I think your shoe's a little bit bigger.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Let a comment about my foot size.
And I think Commissioner Vaughn would like to say.
Congratulations. I think the committee made a great choice.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Go Texas Tech.
And we'll actually call you back up here in just a little bit when it's time for purchasing.
We'll forgive you for that.
Okay.
Did y'all indulge me with the photo?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
How hard it is to get my wife to come up here?
I would love to do that. I would be honored. Let's do that. I'm going to come to you. I like this picture down here. I think it looks really nice. Well, I'm the last person that signed up for public comment. And I just wanted to show you evidence and proof that I really did get the measles shot this morning. And we're conducting countywide a, an awareness campaign for the MMR vaccine, which is our measles, mumps, and rubella. So many years ago, this was a disease that took so many lives. And we're so fortunate that modern medicine has allowed us to have a vaccine where our young children at one years of age start the process of vaccination. But, you know, sadly, there are those that, that don't vaccinate. And we have seen an outbreak in our country, not here, thank goodness, but in other locales. And so it's important to lead by example. But in the process of learning a little bit more about the health department and vaccinations, it came to my attention that those born in the 60s, in particular between 1961 and 1967, did not receive the live vaccine. Well, I was born in 1966, and, and so I was one of that 5% of the population. However, if you really don't have any documentation of the MMR vaccine, it's not going to hurt you to get the vaccine. And so we are asking, at least I am asking, just not ordering, just asking, that all county employees, you know, think about getting the vaccine if they have not received it or if they can't prove that they've received it, or if they fall into this particular category of 60s babies, like myself, and, and vaccinate. Because we want to make sure that we protect all those that are vulnerable. We held a press conference this morning, and I said all the same information. Commissioner Gonzalez was with me, and we did it in English and in Spanish. But it was a super quick, you know, literally nanosecond vaccine. Took one second of a little sting, and it's over. But what a lifetime of protection that it gives. So Sheriff, if you might mention it, anybody who's, you know, travels internationally, anybody who has in, in the health personnel or deals with a large population, you know, you just need to ask. So very easy, you can contact my office for more information, or the health department, or your family physician. But, and I thought it was very cute. It matches the outfit. So.
I ain't going to take mine off, but I got shot, too.
So anyway, that was my public comment.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
And I believe that Commissioner Chesney falls in that 60s category.
Ah, you know, I may, I don't know.
Tyner also received a shot, as well as Maggie Turner. And like I said, all joking aside, this can result in death. So it's, it's a pretty serious issue. And you're going to hear me during flu season say the same thing. If you're over 55, for pneumonia, for shingles, part of our job is, is building a healthy community. And it starts with education and vaccination. And again, it's, it's an awesome opportunity for me to be able to share this from the platform. And that's all I have. But I certainly would ask if anybody else has anything to offer.
We just did 150 shots in West Osso last week for physicals. So we gave shots for 100, 150 physicals and shots. So it was, it was good, West Osso.
It's great. It's great. And you know, with our health plan, I think you're going to see, I know Julie's here. We've got our first wellness luncheon coming up on June 14th. I hope, I'm not speaking out of turn, it's still okay to sign up? Yes, ma'am? So, you know, this is, this is a new opportunity that, that we're initiating here, and I'm excited about it. And please look for them often, because again, a healthy community is a, is a community that prospers. So let's, let's lead by example. Okay, we're now moving on to the consent agenda. We have items A through T today, A through T. But I do know there are a few that need to come out. The first one, I believe, Tyner, is letter R. Is that correct?
To table, that one, Judge.
Table that one? Okay, so we'll move that one. Just a moment. I'm going to pull E. Commissioners, do I have any other?
All of E?
Yes, it's just, yes.
Judge, I motioned to table R since that was...
Okay.
Or I guess it would...
That's okay. I think we can do that.
Oh, oh, excuse me. She wants it pulled.
Pulled. Okay, not, not tabled.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, I'll go ahead and pull R. E and R. Are there any others? Hearing no others, could I have a motion for approving the consent agenda? All letters, A through T, with the exception of E and R.
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, I'll take E. The only reason I pulled E is because I wanted to kind of explain the process. You might remember prior to my being here that this was an item that you would see regularly, commissioners, and you haven't seen it in the last few months. And so there was an inquiry made as to why it was missing. And I've, I've made those inquiries and discovered that it's because we have good, new IT software that are addressing the opportunity for HR to be able... that are addressing the opportunity for HR to be able to receive this information in a very timely and efficient way. So, that's why it's no longer here presented for you, but if you at any time ever need this information, all you would have to do is ask. But I thought it was important that you know, where did it go, and why isn't it there anymore? And that's the only thing that I wanted to make you aware of, as it does deal with personnel. If you'll see, if you notice, if there's a budgeted, a reclassification, it's going to come to you through Dale, through the Auditor's Report, but if there's no need to reclassify, and it's just a personnel change, that information's going to go directly to HR, and then most likely to me, if I need to unfreeze a position that's not, you know, deemed necessary, as in the District Attorney's Office and some of the other law enforcement positions that we have, so...
Most of the concern here was people that left, you know, we don't know what we paid them, what they went, what we owed them, you know what I'm saying? I think that that's important for us to know.
Julie, you're here, do you mind taking, coming up and just sharing with us kind of the good things about the way you're now receiving the information, and can you address Commissioner Gonzalez about if there are issues, how can you bring them to us so that we can be better informed?
We do have a new software system, our application management system, and through that system, we're able to onboard our new employees coming on. So, that helps us to manage the unfreeze list of those that were going out, and so we're able to manage the 30-day freeze that we have in place right now, and we're making sure that we're not doubling up on a position, and that we're holding that vacancy as long as we need to. Also, working with the Auditor's Office, we're making sure the pay grades are remaining what they need to be, and it's still a check and balance through HR and the Auditor's Office when we're bringing somebody on. So, we're keeping people in the pay groups that we've assigned, we've worked really hard throughout the years to make sure we've placed positions on the pay scale, and so, with the Auditor's Office, and so we're making sure that we're doing that correctly.
So, how about the ones that leave, though? I mean, how do we know what we paid out and everything else?
We have a policy, a Nuaces County policy, that we pay out 96 hours of vacation to employees, of vacation...
Up to?
Up to 96 hours, correct, if they have them, of course. And then, if they are eligible for retirement, we pay half of their sick leave up to 480 hours. And of course, they would have had to have met probationary period to be eligible for that, and for the sick leave, they would have to be eligible for retirement.
Those are kind of the ones I really concerned about, the ones that are leaving, and see what we paid out to them, and, you know, see what they have, and...
And, excuse me, and of course, overtime, any time that's sitting there, we are obligated to pay that, and we pay that without any hesitation at all.
Sure, I understand that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? That was all I had. I'll take a motion to approve item number E.
Thank you.
And I've got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign.
So, for item...
Item R, yes.
Item 3R, we just needed to make a little clarification. It was, the recommendation stated, well, referenced the Family Drug Court, and that is not correct. So, this program will be run by County Court Number Five, and overseen by the Victim Services Coordinator with the Nuaces County Juvenile Justice Center, but everything else is correct in its recommendation in the background. So, it's a grant application under the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation for about $150,000 to help juveniles with domestic violence issues.
Motion to approve.
Okay, so we just need to make that distinction, and I think I heard a motion, and I need a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. And I realized I needed to make a comment on letter Q. May I do that, Madam Attorney? Okay, that's the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. You've received a statement of the grant award, and I just want to recognize Judge Missy Mederi at this time. I know she's not in the courtroom, but the point is, you know, throughout Nuaces County, we have people that are serving on state boards and commissions and committees that are making a real difference out there for us, keeping us alert as to the awards and granting opportunities, and the governor-appointed Judge Mederi, I'm not certain when, but, you know, in recent time, to this very important committee, and it just gives us, as a Nuaces County, an opportunity to not miss out, you know, on these very important granting opportunities. And so, I'm grateful for her leadership, and really just the entire judiciary, I'm just, have you noticed, Commissioners, that almost every week, you know, every commission meeting, we have a district judge or a county court at law judge coming to share with us programs that are innovative, that are, you know, making a difference in people's lives or in granting opportunities, that nobody's telling them about. They're finding out about these opportunities and bringing them to us, and I just, I think that goes a little bit unnoticed. I think it's a great opportunity for an article about our relevance and our influence, and so whether it's, you know, Ms. Sands on the retirement district system, or Judge Mederi, you know, working with the Indigent Defense, or, you know, all of us that know people that are serving on statewide boards and commissions, Gary Bradford at the Military Preparedness Commission, it goes on and on, but we never really say thank you, and so I want to say thank you to Judge Mederi for that. Okay, we are done, ready to move on to the regular agenda, and the very first piece is back to policies and technology.
Judge, can I make a, just we're on the regular agenda now, I'd like to make a motion to table A3, so that our county attorney has time to review what she needs to review on the advisory that she just recently gave us.
Absolutely. What, a motion to table for legal advisory reasons? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, and that would include the executive session as well.
Okay, do I need to make a separate motion for that? I'll include that as well, Madam Clerk, that the table includes the executive session item.
And I don't know if I, I'll wait till Friday, because I think it's back on the Friday agenda, I'll just table that then there as well, unless I can do it now, but...
We'll wait till Friday.
Wait, okay.
Okay, so now let me go backwards, and so we've dispensed with A3, but we're going back in time to A1.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Judge, but Friday will be two of us going Friday at night.
Say that again, Judge?
There'll be two of us going Friday, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner, myself, so what do we have in Friday?
Friday is just that one item, it's, but he just tabled it, and the second item, well, there's two items, and the second item is the review of the selection committees. It's for Maria's, Maria, why don't you come up? Let me see, is Grant's on here this week? No. Why don't you educate Commissioner Gonzalez about the need, why are we having a special commission meeting for this one particular CDBG grant? Can she do that?
Maybe put her in public comment?
Yeah.
Let's do that.
I'll sign her up.
Public comment, and then, yeah.
So, wait, we have one...
Hold on.
Give me one second.
You got to sign up.
Give me one second.
So we can do it right.
Okay, Maria, I'm recalling for the record, public comment for the purpose of, the limited purpose of discussing the Friday, the reason for the commission meeting on Friday.
So, the county recently went out for RFQ services, for engineering services, for the $4.6 million disaster recovery allocation that we received from the General Land Office. So, we, the selection committee met on Monday to pick an engineer to help us with costing, and then eventually construction management, as well as a grant consultant to help us with some of the things that we, you know, are just a little more labor-intensive if we do them in-house, which is environmental assessments and labor standards, documentation, things like that. So, Friday will be the selection of those services.
She didn't respond in public comment, right?
That's it?
So, can I put myself in public comment?
He already was, so he can go.
You can make a comment if you want to.
Sure.
He's on it already.
Or you just make a comment.
Yeah. I really don't agree totally on this, how we're doing this, because I don't know the cost for this engineer, how much we're going to pay him to do something maybe one can do, I mean, but, I think. But the other one is that, when you say construction, so it kind of tells me if they do the cost assessment, they're going to do everything for all those projects, and I really don't, I really don't agree to that, you know, that why should they do all the projects?
And I don't think she can respond, is that correct? Okay.
Well, I'm not going to be here till Friday, I guess.
But I, but I have an, but I can update, I can update the Commissioner as to the requirements.
Well, I...
Okay, I'll be able to, thank you, Maria. Okay, at this time, and through Tyner's office, I'm going to have full disclosure here with regards to that CDBG grant, okay? Just spend some time there. Okay, so will Lance be presenting the network communications policy? Actually, it's really technology policies.
Long time no see.
Yeah.
So, this agenda item's really just to put it on the table for y'all to start reviewing, and I'm here to answer any questions, but I know that there were quite a few of them. We've been working on, and we, being IT, have had this on our plate for quite some time, to redo these technology policies. I've made reference to it in the past, that the previous technology policy, what we call the in-network communications policy, is from 1999, and in a couple factoids, that was before SpongeBob SquarePants existed and all that stuff, so it needed review for sure, and it took quite some time, in fact, that's one of the primary reasons.
So, Lance, this is the SpongeBob SquarePants policy, is that what you called this?
Yes, SpongeBob, who lives in the pineapple under the sea, yes.
Woo!
So, it took a lot of effort to put these together, and this is one of the primary reasons we picked Infotech to help us. We used their business policies that they had, and they have hundreds to choose from, that helped us kind of not have to reinvent the wheel here. It does come in layers, instead of creating one big policy that we have, that is more difficult to review and update, we elected to leave them separate and have a consent form that ties them all together, that will go out for signature once we have these approved. This is just kind of a discussion on it, let y'all start digesting it. We still have to figure out how to deploy this in a way that we don't have to send out 1,200 sheets of paper for signature, and we've got a couple options on the table, that my policies thing that we've discussed in the past, and we may have another one in case that one doesn't go through in the meantime. So, I expect these to be somewhere probably right around the new fiscal year is when we would distribute these, but yeah, we've got various things in that old policy that are not good practice that we need to replace these with.
Right, and then there's some very important ones, Assist HR, for example, on the Internet Acceptable Use Policy, I'd ask you guys to look at that, it's on page. Well, it's one of three at the back of the packet, that's obviously very important and very relevant, is what's acceptable internet use and what's unacceptable, and that's just a piece of it. But just recall that what Lance is referring to, Commissioners, is the opportunity to have all our county policies in one sort of domain, where we can all access them a lot, you know, with a lot more ease, and HR can as well, as far as distribution. I think the hardest part is the implementation, and so I'm really looking forward to hopefully bringing that comprehensive domain where all policies can be managed and housed.
Yes, and, you know, part of...
And updated.
Yeah.
That's really the most important piece of it, updated.
To encourage updating, we need to make the ability to update simple, and it's not simple when you have to redistribute, you know, using paper, so that my policies would really help not just this policy, but any policies.
Right, so countywide, the goal is all policies should have a 2019 date on them, and if they don't, there needs to be a very good justification as to why. So, that's our goal, and I think that this is for good consideration, but there's no action required here. So, are there any questions for Lance? If not, Lance, will just give us time to please read it and digest it, it's not really that long, and it's very, very well done.
I want to thank Laura and Belinda for reviewing that. It was, we were trying to get this in as soon as possible so that we could have y'all start looking at it, and they, there was quite a few pages to look through, so thank you.
It's great, it's comprehensive, but it's not voluminous, and that's really important in a policy. If you're going to make everybody read it, understand it, and abide by it, they need to actually, it can't be a 100-page report, you know, so, plain English. I think it's very good, the way it's outlined.
If we have changes in the future to the individual policies, they won't have to feel like they have to read the entire thing, we can just adjust the individual policy, and it'll be an easier read when we make adjustments.
And just remind me, cell phones were addressed on here, county cell phones that had internet?
Yeah, they're considered end-user devices.
Okay, end-user devices, consider cell phone and iPads. Okay, okay, thank you. Are there any other discussions? Okay, hearing none, I'm just going to move on to number two. Thank you so much, Lance. It's this time, I'm going to recognize Ms. Ida Gatazana, we've got a presentation on Nuaces County Public Libraries, in particular, the Summer Reading Program launch, it's exciting.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ida.
I'm very happy to be here this morning with Crystal Langini. We started our summer reading program 11th annual, and we have had a lot of success so far, and I always come up here to give y'all good news, but our staff has really stepped up since we've had lots of changes, and it's all good, so I'll have Crystal give you some information.
Thank you, Crystal, welcome.
Hello, good morning, Judge, Commissioners. If y'all seen your newsletter, the county lines, the human resources passed out, you see information about our summer reading program. It began June 1st and will end in July 3rd. We are, our theme this year is Universal Stories, so we are celebrating, leading up to celebration of July, the 50th anniversary of Apollo moon landing. So, we invite all families, parents, kids, babies, teens, to come and register for summer reading program at Keach and at Bishop. We'll be learning more facts, new facts about space, we invite people to do crafts, read books, and just come together. Summer reading is digital, so you can download the ReadSquared app on your smart device, or go onto a computer, log on, or come to the library, ask us how to register, you can come in and just ask us, we'll help you guide through to that. And you can log in your minutes, so feel free to grab a book, reading on your smartphones, that does count as well, so log in those minutes, win prizes. We do, we are very thankful for our sponsors this year, U.S. Ecology has donated money so we can afford to buy Amazon Fire tablets, so we can promote literacy, digital literacy as well, eBooks, audiobooks. And then just five tips that we encourage families to come out, rent the summer slide, because as you do know, school is out in the summer, some of them do go to summer school. So, one, keep them engaged and learning while they're out of school. Two, encourage kids to read at least 20 minutes every day, and I invite also adults to read 20 minutes every day, that encourage memory, to keep that going for older adults as well. And three, read to your kids, let them sit on your laps, or your grandkids come and sit on their laps as well. We can come story times on Tuesdays. And four, transform car rides into reading time, when you're on your way to work, listen to that eBook or listen to that audiobook, because we do have our Libby app you can download, too. And also, five, visit your local library with your kids, and let them pick out books on their favorite topics, and they'll read more often. Visit any of your local libraries, especially your county libraries, at Keach and Bishop, because we offer a lot of variety of programs, and also just different programs digital as well. And just to let you know, too, for the past three days, just let you know, since 25 people have registered, and they have read 28,000 minutes, so that's 466 hours. So, let's get in Nuaces together, get in Nuaces to read, so together we make this a healthier, stronger community.
I love it, that's my theme this year, Nuaces Together, so thank you for sharing that. And all those are free apps, right? Tell everybody, they're free apps.
Free apps.
You won't get in trouble with your parents, they're free apps.
And free books.
That's great, and I'd like to have you work with my office, so I can come do summer reading on a Tuesday afternoon?
Yes.
And that's one of my favorite pastimes, and I just can't say enough of the good things, and I'd like to ask a favor, I feel like I just know you all so well and all the things you're doing, and I'd like to have the Bishop Library representatives come over, Commissioner, and so I can also thank them, and just get a feel for what they're doing out there, too. I know so much of it coordinates through you, Ida, but it would be nice for us to see them and thank them, too, and I know it's just a little bit longer of a drive, but... a drive, but thank you for keeping our kids active and their brains moving with twenty minutes a day reading and all the pre-K and STEM programs that you're doing. It's just awesome, and the building looks beautiful, Edward. Thank you. I noticed, I noticed. It got power washed, I could tell. It looks good. That's good. Thank you. Okay. And so, at this time, I'm gonna ask Juan to come up, and we have two items in Public Works today, and one of them is a Dune Walkover Permit, or maybe that's DePac, I don't know. Okay, Juan, today, thank you.
Hey, Judge.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Judge, Pola Works is recommending approval of the first ninety-day permit extension for the Dune Walkover Permit, DPP zero-two-one-six-dash-zero-two-P. So we're recommending approval for, for the first ninety-day.
So moved.
And I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Uh, the second item, Judge and Commissioners, is to purchase the installation of HVAC equipment from Johnson Controls. This is for the VAV boxes. What it'll make it do automated, and it'll connect to our medicine program, so we're recommending for us to install these new, the new system, or the new VAV box, boxes.
What's, and what's the cost, and what's the funding?
Twenty-eight thousand.
And where's the funding source?
Uh, it'll come from Pola Works.
Okay, second to his motion.
Yes, these boxes are, are needed, and-
Yes, ma'am.
And the only discussion I have is that, um, I just wanna kind of bring some awareness to the just, in general, the JCI contract lauda, and just would ask that we constantly, you know, look at that and make sure that we're, that they're doing everything they're supposed to be doing, and just in general, not exactly thrilled about a very, very difficult contract for this county, where I don't see, every time I get more information about things like solar panels that were installed that never work, and energy savings contracts that don't provide any energy savings, incon- inconsistency with control boxes everywhere, and it seems like everywhere we turn, maintenance, they're red flags, and so I just feel like it's something that needs to be reviewed in the normal course of doing business. Okay, but I mean, this is a necessity, and-
Yes, ma'am.
And they're the provider, so we need to get it done. Okay, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign.
Good, thank y'all.
Okay, and then I'll ask Michael to come and discuss purchasing at this time.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to table this, we have some other information.
Bless you. That scared me.
Me too. Second her motion.
I've got a motion to table, Michael, so we'll discuss this at a, at a future time period. And all those in favor of tabling the item C1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. In that case, we'll move over to Dale, who has a budget change order, and I'm gonna move to that in my notebook, that's D1.
Yes, Your Honor, we have the first one for your consideration, budget change order number fifteen for our current fiscal year. There's five departments requesting some changes. The largest one is Constable Precinct Five. Because of some of the age of the vehicles that they have there, they have some, they have some larger repair, repair expense cost, and that was, that was necessarily needed to be done. They had the money available in their gasoline and fuel cells to be able to cover that cost. For the tax collector, we, we've got some new scanners in that they had to have training for, and those funds are also being moved. McKenzie Annex also has some additional repairs. These are what's been provided for me for budget change order request. The funds are available for these, these requests, and I submit this for your approval.
So moved.
Moved.
Sorry, second.
I've got a motion and a second on the various budget change orders for the annex, gasoline and fuel, and some of the maintenance and on small equipment repairs. All those in favor, I'm sorry, do I have a second? Yes, okay, motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Okay, and then Dale, if you take us through the financials.
Yes, ma'am, Your Honor, the, uh, this is the monthly financial report for April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Hold on, hold on, Dale, can you, I got a question.
Okay, let's go back, backwards just a minute on the change order.
On the first one, eleven-thirty, County Attorney's Office, is that a, like an increase or what?
No, they were, it's a little bit of a, a, a overtime in their, in their, their office for some, some covering of a vacancy side, so they just, a real small amount that needed to be done, so we're just moving the money to cover that cost.
Okay, I'm okay, but I just, I didn't know what it was, I just, okay. No problem. We can go on, Judge.
All right, for the April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, uh, uh, of our fiscal year, this represents fifty-nine percent of the fiscal year had been completed with forty-one percent remaining. So on page four, you'll see the balances for all of our funds, which is, which, which going through our balances of where we are for our assets liabilities and fund balances. Now, these do seem high, but as you know, that we're in, just past the, the middle of the fiscal year. If you kind of turn to page nine, you'll kind of get a representation of about where we are and where, where, and showing that we're about where we should be, and on page nine, you see a, a five-line bar chart showing the procedures of where, where we are and have been in the past, and if you follow along with where we were, around fifty million dollars, and you proceed up on April, that's about where we should, we have been the last four or five years, which is a good, good, good point. Next item is going to be on page, uh, nine and ten, showing you our health, health insurance funds, our self-insurance funds. This last month, we had, our revenue and expenses were very close to one another, so there wasn't a, a large increase or decrease in our fund balance. We still have a positive fund balance for our health insurance of one-point-one million dollars, uh, but we need to keep an eye on this, this balances, 'cause this is where we need to make sure through our budgeting process whether we need to adjust our premiums up or down a, as we go. And you'll kind of see the, the, that little scenario on page twelve, where we show the revenue to expense, the revenue is the blue line at the very bottom chart, and the expenses the red line, you'll see for the month of January and for the month of March, we were over, our expenses were higher than our revenue, and for this last period of time, it was not, it was a very small amount, and you'll kind of tell, tell that on page thirteen. Page thirteen, at the very bottom, we show you our comparison between the net income of this year and last year. Last year, our net income loss was one-point-six million at, at the same period, and this year it's only one-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand because of those large fluctuations, and that's where we need to make sure, we keep an eye on this, 'cause that's where we need to make sure our balances are, are, are there. As we go to page sixteen, we show our balances for our, our revenue for the general fund, and as you see, we've collected eighty-six-point-nine percent of our, our balances. Our taxes are ninety-eight-point-nine percent, and, and which is right where we expected them to be. The tax office does a very good job of collecting our funds, and, and that should continue. The, the other ones are throughout the year, and we expect to have collections for this. As in the past, we shouldn't expect to, as we get closer to the end of the year, be closer to one-hundred, one-hundred, one, one-hundred-one percent of that, those balances. Now, we're gonna go through some of our budget requests. As I said, we are forty-one percent of the budget remaining. As we go through our budgets, we go to page thirty-one, which is where the first department's showing a negative position for the, the balances, and on page thirty-one, you'll see Department fourteen-sixty-five at the very bottom of that report. That is a Broadway Warehouse showing as a thirty-nine-point-two percent remaining of the budget, and some of it's because of the utility costs have been a little bit higher, and we, we kind of expect some of that, but we're gonna keep working with those departments. The next one's going to be on page thirty-three.
Because of the utilities, 'cause of our energy costs there?
Yes, for the utility costs for that, as well as they had a, a little bit of repair and maintenance that, that wasn't really foreseen to be done there, and that's causing some of the problems that we, we see, but we're, we're keeping working with, with, with Mr. Pennatell and, and his staff to make sure we can, we can get this balances under control.
But as we come into the summer months, I'm afraid that one's headed probably for-
Possibly, and, and sometimes we, we, we project the, the utilities as close as where we need to be, and sometimes because of, of however it works out, that, that might be the case. Also, on page thirty-three, you also see on the, towards the middle, you'll see Department fifteen-twenty, which is their Bishop Building, is also slightly over the projected available budgets, and they're at thirty-seven-point-seven percent. They're not too far off, but we still need to work with them, and again, the main cost is the telephone utility cost for those balances. The next one that was-
Sorry to interrupt, but that's, that's why it's good to-
Roof is, has a lot to do with it, too, because-
Yes, yes.
That's what I'm saying on this energy stuff, I mean, you can't just say it, you actually have to find savings.
Yes.
You can't just have a contract that says, "I'm gonna find you energy savings," and then not find it.
Right.
It's very frustrating, but I'm really glad you're pointing these out, because Juan and Edward, this is where we're gonna really concentrate, you know? The numbers don't lie, so we'll know if we're making good energy decisions, if we can get some of these, I mean, these numbers are gonna get up higher. I mean, it's nothing right now compared to July and August.
Yes, we expect those to be the highest, highest.
Okay, keep going.
On page thirty-eight, as it was in the, in the last month, our legal aid, Department thirty-two-hundred, is over, and the only reason, because we do have, are we required to pay the, the rent for this particular function all at one time, so that's kind of why it's over, it's not, the rest of the, the balances are, are in line, so, so that's the only reason why that, this particular department is, is over, and we'll continue working on this. I've got two district courts that are coming over on page forty-one. The Hundred Fifth District Court, Department thirty-three-thirty, is at forty-point-two percent. I'm working with Judge Poulter and going through the numbers, but he's had some large, capital cases that's coming through his, his office, that's causing some of this, and a little bit of travel expenses that they've, they've had. Also on page forty-three, the two-fourteenth, the thirty-three-sixty, I'm working with Judge Klein on, on those balances as well, and she's also had some large criminal cases come through the case, and, and I'm trying to work through the numbers, and, and she had one of her staff that was on leave for a little while, so she did, has some overtime expenses, and that's kind of what, what is causing some of this, this little, little problems on, on those, those cases. The next one you'll see is on page fifty-two. I'll let you get to page fifty-two, and that is our Sheriff's Office. Our Sheriff's Office is at thirty-eight-point-four percent, and a lot of it is overtime for, for some of his vacancies that he's had, overtime and, and benefits for that function, as well as a few small little services and, and other functions that we had through the balance. We had the MetroCom coming in, and MetroCom is paid all at once, and that's kind of causing some of this, this fluctuation, and you'll see that towards the bottom, that one-point-three million is MetroCom, that we, we have to pay that, so that's causing a little bit of this part, problems, but we're working with his staff and, and we're going through the balances that we have.
So MetroCom's budget?
Around one-point-two, one-point-three million.
It all, but it all comes out.
All comes out at once.
Dale?
Yes.
You said it's overtime, so does that mean they need another officer?
Well, it's because of vacancies, they've had to call in some staff to work overtime as they work through some vacancies and, and as they-
So why don't they fill those vacancies?
They're, they're working on it. They, they have, they are working on those, those vacancies, and, and part of the negotiation we're gonna be having with the collective bargaining agreement is trying to, to resolve some of these issues, and we'll be talking to that when we, we start having our meetings.
Ever since I've been here, this has been an issue, the overtime.
Yes.
Been an issue.
And sometimes, tho- those positions sometimes are hard, hard to fill, especially the jails, facilities are hard to fill, 'cause sometimes people want to work, but they don't want that kind of work. And, and that, that's how it works. Now, the good function about this, if you look on page sixty, for the entire general fund, we're at fifty-point-nine percent remaining of the, of available funds for budget, and it, and we're at forty-one percent remaining of the year, so we're very good position for a total general fund. Now, as you turn to page sixty-three, this is where I, where I, I've seen some, some good portions of it, actually sixty-two and sixty-three. Some people ask where the money goes, you'll see that on sixty-two, sixty-two percent of our, our expenses and, for the functions, go to law enforcement and administrative justice, so if we wanna know where most of the, the bills come from, those are driving most of the costs for, for county government as, as we see, see, we, see it goes. Now, the, what I'll turn, turn to page sixty-three is the difference between this year and last year for fiscal year at this position, and you'll see we're only five-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars difference between the two, but we know we did have some salary increases and, and some other adjustments that we had, so this is very promising, saying that we're doing a very good job controlling expenses, 'cause we're only that small of a difference between this year to last year, so we're doing very well, even when we had a large increase because of some of the stuff we went through our budget process. Next function I would like to start, talk to you about is going all the way back to page eighty-four. Showing our P-card transactions for the month of April was two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars for the year.
Eighty-four.
Page eighty-four, yes. Two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars for the month of April. Majority of the expenses were for repairs and maintenance of equipment and buildings, as well as maintenance and repairs of grounds. Now, the last one I would like to go to is the very last page, one, page one-hundred-and-fifty-four, show you for the total seven-month inning as of April of this year, we have spent two million four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand six-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars through P-card transactions, and as Michael has mentioned, we're working with his, his staff and our staff to try to, to do some information. We're working with the County Attorney's Office with our current P-card vendor, and possibly having to bring this to court for a, a review of, of that transaction, and possibly getting some of our current payments that are going through as the check processed as a virtual P-card, which will increase this balance, but also will re- increase our, our rebate to us by at least twenty or thirty thousand dollars. So we're trying to work the, but, but we know we have to work with our, our, the County Attorney's Office, because it's probably gonna be brought through court as a RFQ or RFP or FB, or, or some kind of a bid process to, to function that. So that is the monthly financial report that I have available for April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
And on what page was the two million four-hundred?
The very, very last page, on page one-fifty-four.
One-fifty-four, oh, the very last one, okay.
Showing you, we've had eight, eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-two transactions at two million four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand six-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents, an average transaction of two-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars.
And year-to-date?
That is year-to-date.
That is year-to-date. What about year-over, like from last year?
Uh, I don't, don't have that on there, we can, we can start including that.
Yeah, 'cause you know, when maintenance and repair is just a big chunk of it, I'm gonna go back to this harping again, but I think we need to dig, dig deeper. I noticed, I asked for a report, I think, I was sort of shocked how many vehicles we have, I think there are two-hundred-and-ninety-seven. That's why that number is so high, you know, just when we get into the budget process and you really wanna know how to start saving money, you really have to look at your M and O. That's, that's where everything is going, so you have to make some decisions whether it's best to have, you know-
We also plan to bring something on there. Michael and I have been, and been working with a, a, a vendor that wants to, to present something to the court, possibly on leasing our fleet instead of purchasing our fleet, and part of that leasing our fleet means they will pay for the repair and maintenance. They'll give us a, a window, this amount our, our repair, they, they budget for, and if it goes over that, they pay for it, we don't.
I'm very interested, I'm, I'm interested in saving money, and I think that that's-
And this could be a very, and it could be that it also reduced the age of our fleet, 'cause they'll be replacing our fleet every five years, instead of some of the times we wait till the wheels fall off.
Right, and if we put a few electric vehicles in there, we might actually have some gas savings as well.
Now, this mainly, this will, the lease right now that we've been talking with is a, is covering our law enforcement and our, our truck fleet.
Oh, okay.
Include our, our public works.
Got it.
Include our heavy equipment, just our, just our-
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you, Dale. Are there any questions for Dale this time? Okay, so I'll take a motion first on the approval of the financial report, which is dated April twenty nineteen, and I need a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, and then the quarterly investment report, Dale, is follows.
Yes, so we have the quarterly investment report, we, we went through our, our investment committee for, for approval, this was approved by, by the committee, uh, to, to cover where, where our balances are. On page one, you'll see a little summary of, of where we are, and you'll see the total cash and cash equivalents for this position is a hundred-and-twenty-eight billion four-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars, as compared to the last fiscal year, uh, last year, we're, I don't know, last report, we're up twenty-eight million from a total of ninety-eight, ninety-nine million, and we'll go through those particular items at, at, in a, in a few minutes. On page three, you'll see a breakdown between our operating funds, our capital project funds, debt service funds, and other funds, and we'll explain those funds here in, in a little bit, showing you where we're at, and you'll see that we are at a hundred-and-twenty-eight million four-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand three-hundred-and-eighty-seven, and, and for the total, uh, all funds. Of that, the general fund has a, the largest share of forty, sixty-three million two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand, Of that, the general fund has a, the largest share of forty, sixty-three million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. But you'll see a breakdown between where we're at on the, in the portfolio, our cash and bank is seventy-six percent. Our investments is at ten and our, our, your cash and bank is twelve, pardon me. Cash equivalent is seventy-six and our investments are, are, are ten. On page four and five, we show our breakdown between our operating funds and our other funds. Our other funds do include our self insurance fund, our special revenue funds and our grant funds. And those numbers do match the reports and that shows the operating fund. The general fund showing seventy-six million dollars. And this is only how we, difference between last year and this year. But we show our, our balance as, as a fifty-seven million, five sixty-two for the general fund. Now, the good thing we have is on page six and seven. Now, let me, pardon me. Let me go to the very top where we go, portfolio diversity. And we, I want to make sure you're well aware of this. As you very, you see the very top, you see cash equivalents, broker CDs, municipal bonds and US agencies. And you see our value and we see our percent of value. For cash equivalents, we're showing eighty-seven point nine two percent. Our investment policy maximum shows eighty-five percent. And we're working with the, the County Attorney's Office and to come up with possible review of our policy and, and determine maximum. Now, why do we set this maximum? This maximum is trying to, to keep our, our, our balances diversified, so there's no particular risk of value. But we're over this balance, because right now, and we'll, I'll tell you towards the end, our current balances for our, for our bank that we have most of our money in, as well as our Texas class, where we have most of our MBA accounts, are generating about two point five, two point six percent interest. We can't find an interest in, of that value for a CD or, or municipal bond or an agency fund anywhere close to that. That wouldn't require us to go five years out. And we don't feel that it's justified to lock something in for five years to get point one percent difference of interest. So that's why we're keeping some of our funds more in cash and cash equivalents. And that's why we're exceeding that, that eighty-five percent. And that's why we'll probably be bringing something to our committee to, to discuss this. And if there is a possible change, bring it to the court for, for your, your review and approval. That's kind of why you see that little bit inflated on that.
And isn't it true that it's also why we're seeing an increase of four hundred thousand dollars for the quarter?
Exactly.
From investment earnings? So I would, I would ask that we, you know, bring that to as quickly as possible, because.
We are working on that. My, my office has got some changes, we're going to be submitting to the County Attorney for their review and, and, and see if they, we, they agree with our, our adjustments on the changes. Then we'll bring it to the committee for, for their, their approval. We should see it before court very quickly.
Yeah, thank you.
On page seven, you'll see at the very top, we have some changes in our investments. And a couple of our changes, one of our municipal bonds has matured. And two of our agency funds have matured. So three point three million dollars has matured. And now that is now part of cash equivalents. And again, that's one of the reasons why that has, has increased. As the judge was saying, the, the comparative interest earnings of, for all funds is, is, is below. For this particular period, we've earned seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, forty-nine dollars compared to last year of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine. Or a difference of four hundred thousand dollar difference for that's quarter. For this year, we've earned seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars more than last year. So that's why we're showing the, the interest rates where we're at and how we're managing the funds is bringing more money. Now, we have been told by our, our brokers that, that because of the stuff's going on with, with the, between China and us and Mexico and us, it's, it's possibly going to reduce some, some of the rates because of, of how the market flows. But we'll, we'll keep an eye on it, we'll make sure that the funds are, are invested as, as we see fit and, and to the best of the county's ability.
So by the end of the fiscal year, we'll probably, we'll definitely go over a million dollars.
At least, yes. I foresee probably closer to two, if, if, if everything works out great. Now, the, the next few pages are just showing our, our total investments based on where they are and how the positions they are for, for ladderings. And you'll see on page eight and nine, you'll see the, the minuses where I mentioned where we've, we've had some that have matured. And you'll see which ones they have, those are, pardon me. Page ten basically shows basically our CDs and what we currently have invested in CDs. Right now, we have right about twelve particular CDs in, in our, our investment portfolio. And how we go. On page twelve and thirteen shows our, our municipal bonds. And as we said, the, the one that just matured was the last one on your list, that was for Texas Tech University, that it didn't, just finally did mature. We currently still do have two. And those being the Forest State Administration and also the New York City, New York Building for American Bond Issues. And, and why we invested those, you'll see that their rates are, are closer to three or four percent. And that's why we've, we've done this investments. On page fourteen shows you our portfolio holding by fund. And you'll see that our operating funds are twenty-two percent of, of the balances. Our debt service is five point one seven. Because of the issuance of bond and debt, we have our capital projects, which is a very large fifty percent of our, of our funds. Now, these are investments only, this does not include market, cash equivalents, they're only investments. And that's, that's that seventeen thousand dollars we talked about earlier, or seventeen million, excuse me. Our breakdown on page fifteen shows you how we currently do our investments. We try to keep our, our investments, broker dealers equally diversified between each, each one of those. And you'll see we, we do a, a very good, a, a chance of, of trying to split the, the value. We're a little bit high on one of them right now. But as we start trying to find more investments, we tend to go to those that, that possibly need it. But, but if they give us the best deal, that's how we're trying to do and best split out between the balances. For our agencies on page sixteen. Our agency funds are our federal funds that we have in, as, as been in the past, most of our, our, our investments are in our, our federal home loans or what they call Freddie Mac at fifty percent. And the rest is your Fannie Mae and your federal farm credit bank balances. Now, what's been impressive is on page seventeen. And you'll see that's where we compare our yield to the, the one-year treasury yield. And as you see, our, our line is the pink line and their, their line is the blue line. Our is, can continue going up where the, the treasury's gone down slightly. And that's why, even though we, we are heavy in some of our cash equivalents, we're still very close to where the two-year treasury. I mean, one-year treasury, excuse me. Two-year treasury is, is going through the same process of, of comparison. And, and we, we kind of narrowed some of this, this balances down and how we see fit and, and we expect that to continue. Now, this is where I'm telling you on page nineteen shows you our current interest rates. Our current interest rate is the very last row is our depository, which was, is currently with Frost Bank. For March of this year, they were paying two point four percent of our balance that we had in, in, in the account. And if you think that we had, now I think we had fifteen million dollars in, in our bank account, if you, fifteen million at two percent, that's quite a bit of return. Now, the other one is your Texas class, which is your, your third row, and that's two point six one percent. So those two items right there are explaining why we're over the eighty, the seventy-five percent threshold or, and, and where we are for our, our investments.
The eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five, sorry, sorry, eighty-five percent. So that's kind of where we are, our, our, our position is for our, our investment. As, as I mentioned, we are working on reviewing the investment policy and we will be bringing this to the committee very soon with our changes. And then, and then once the changes are, are approved by the committee, they will be brought to the court for your approval. With that being the, the balances for our quarterly investment report for March. Do you have any questions?
That's a good investment report.
It is great.
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the quarterly investment report? And I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post same sign. Okay, great. At this time, commissioners, I'm giving public notice that the Commissioners Court has elected to go into executive session to discuss matters that were listed on the agenda. And this is authorized by the Open Meetings Act, chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. And this executive session is in authority with the Government Code, specifically sections five-five-one, oh-seven-one, oh-seven-two, oh-seven-three, oh-seven-four, oh-seven-four-five, oh-seven-six, oh-eight-six and oh-eight-seven. After, at this time, the court will consult with our attorney, including matters related to litigation, real property, prospective gifts, personal matters, including termination, county advisory boards, security devices, economic development negotiations and other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of our executive session today, we, as Commissioners Court, will come back into open session and take such appropriate action as required on the items that we discussed in executive session. And so at this time, I'm going to gavel us out. It is eleven oh-four AM. Mics are on, it's eleven thirty-four AM. We're out of executive session and we have no action at this time, commissioners. And so I'd ask that we begin our adjournments and memory of. Commissioner Chesney, do you want to start us off this morning?
Yes, ma'am, unfortunately, I have more than I would. The first one that I would like to recognize is the passing of Kermit Beatty. Kermit was the owner and founder of Hoes of South Texas and has been a member of this community for many, many years. His son Tripp Beatty and his wife Brandy live here in Corpus Christi. I think his daughters are living out of city and state now. But I, I grew up down the street from the Beatty family and he was just a wonderful guy. And it was a very unexpected loss. He had been fighting an infection and unfortunately, the infection got the better of him and he passed away unexpectedly. So to the Beatty family, I certainly want to pass on my condolences to them. A classmate of mine unexpectedly passed away. Randy, Randy Rayler was what we called him, James Randolph Rayler. He was the stepson of Doty Rayler, who was Jack Hunter's court administrator for many years. And, and his dad was a, a lawyer here for many years as well. And so the passing of Randy Rayler at a very early and way too early age. Wanted to also pass on my condolences to the family of Roy Oliver. Roy was kind of a local basketball legend here in Corpus Christi. Even at the ripe old age of eighty-six, when he passed away, he played senior basketball and just grew up with, with Mr. Oliver at my church. And his son Todd lives here in Corpus Christi and wanted to also pass on condolences to them. He was actually inducted into the Corpus Christi Basketball Hall of Fame. So he was definitely a basketball guy, Judge. I know you share that passion with me as well. Also to Andres Alvarez, excuse me, who was a police officer here in, in Corpus Christi. He passed away as well on May thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. And his family lived here and want to pass on our condolences to the Alvarez family for their, for their loss. And finally, unfortunately, another great Ray Texan judge, Coach Robert Bobby Dodd, who I'm sure was there when you were there and certainly was. When I was there, I went to school with his, his daughter Renee and, and of course, his son Bobby or Boo, as he went by, was the Flower Bluff head coach boys for many, many years until he moved on to another location. But Coach Dodd passed away recently as well. And my condolences to his family and all of these families that I mentioned today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez?
I only have one, it'd be Mr. Romeo Garcia. He was a brother of Lupe Garcia, the owner of the Hi-Ho Restaurant, where we hang around sometimes. He was very much involved in the community and he will definitely be missed by his family and friends. And you know, I remember, because I, about ten years ago, I married him and his wife. So we are going to miss him. Our prayers go out to the family.
Thank you, Commissioner Vaughn.
Well, I don't have the obituary that you read about Coach Robert Dodd. But every once in a while, I really wish I could be at two places at once, because I wanted to be at that memorial service. And I was after, I guess it was Saturday afternoon that I looked in the paper from the week where I tried to play catch-up and I saw it. And Coach Dodd was not only a great Ray Texan and a member of the Texan Hall of Fame, a great, a great lineman from Abilene Christian University. But actually, I'm sorry, he was a defensive end. He was a defensive end from Abilene Christian and he, and he taught the defensive ends and coached them at Ray High School. You'll remember that, Tyner. And he taught health. And he actually substituted to, you know, till just very recently, he would still go to Ray High School to substitute. And well, what can I say? He was one of my favorite teachers. And he stayed with me, followed me throughout my entire career, never missed anything that I ever did. Always would get very mad. He'd always say, they're not giving you enough credit. He always wanted to give me more than I deserved. And I just, I haven't been able to muster it up, because I'm going to need a lot of Kleenex when I talk to Boo. But to his wife Barbara, to Boo and to their family, I express my greatest condolences to a great Ray Texan. And someone who really loved kids very much and wanted to make sure that they got to have their dreams. I'll miss Coach Dodd in my corner, but I know he's upstairs. So anyway, with that, I have a motion for adjournment. And we are adjourned. Eleven thirty-nine.